I'd like to welcome everyone to this meeting, please be seated. Okay, folks, all right, we're on. The number one, to confirm the correct record, the minutes of the council meeting have been taken from November six thousand and fourteen, these are on pages one to four. Want to read?
Ready.
Thank you. Item two, apologies for absence.
Apologies received from councillor Paul Jefferson Robinson.
Any further councillor or so?
Mark Wray.
Councillor Mark Wray, thank you. Councillor Finley?
Councillor Casey Colvin.
Councillor Colvin, thank you. Councillor Hall? Sorry, councillor Hall.
Long and foxen.
Right, thank you.
Councillor Lawson.
Thank you. Everybody else? Thank you. Item three, declarations of interest, councillors, staff, to give notice of any disclosable, pecuniary interest, other registrable interest, or any other interest and the nature of that interest, writing to any item on the agenda in accordance with the adopted code of conduct. Any declarations? Thank you. Item four, exclusion of the press and public, to consider whether there are any items on the agenda for which the press and public should be excluded. Ready? Okay, thank you. Questions? Item five, to answer questions on the procedural rule number four, seven hundred and two from councillors, and procedural rule number four, sixteen from members of the public. Understand all questions will be received. Item six, notices of motion. A councillor Wilson has submitted a notice of motion. The maximum time allowed for this item is thirty minutes. Any extension is at my discretion. All speakers have a maximum of five minutes each. I will let you know when there's one minute left, if you've lost your time. And councillor Wilson will have a right of reply at the end of the debate. If councillor Wilson speaks again on this motion, we'll move straight to a vote. Is everybody clear? Councillor Wilson, your motion, please.
First of all, Mr Mayor, I'd like to make an amendment to the motion to clarify that the agreement to move to a committee system is in principle as a detailed report would have to be considered by the council.
Can you read the motion, please? Thank you.
This council recognises that the move to the executive system has made local government less democratic and less transparent, while ninety-four thousand Aladale residents have become detached from the decision-making process. The current process is neither political or geographical representative of Aladale. It is proposed that this council subject a consideration of a detailed report prepared by officers for consideration of the next council meeting, a pleasing principle to move to an alternative to the executive. Governments by adopting the committee system as made possible by the localism act. Localism act. Each committee would be appointed by a council and would have powers to delegate it from full council to discharge specific council functions. All decisions will be made by committees rather than individuals with the new system, with the exception of day-to-day operational matters. Councillors from all parties and wars will make up the committees, which will affect the political balance of the authority and give a great representation to the wider borough. A return to the committee system is the most open and democratic way of making decisions at local authority level. This system allows all fifty-six councillors elected by the public to lay their part in decision-making, and encourages participation and engagement by the wider community. All decisions will be made in public under the new system, making it more transparent form of governance completely available to us. I'd like to move the motion, and I'd like to have a recorded vote.
Is our motion seconded? Councillor Finley? Can you second the motion?
I am, I am.
Right, thank you. Can you switch your microphone on, please? Councillor Wilson, thank you. Councillor Smith? Oh, sorry, you're seconding, sorry. Well, councillor Finley, I'm seconding.
Yeah, I did, sorry, the mic wasn't working, yeah.
Sorry, I thought you were just seconding.
No, no, sorry, Mr Mayor, no, I'll support it in words as well at this stage. First thing I want to say is I'm not seconding it to imply any wider support for UKIP or its policies, I'm supporting the motion because I agree with the motion. The alternative would be for me to agree with the motion but to vote against it simply because it had been put forward by another party, I find that ridiculous. I'm supporting the motion because I think it's a fundamentally good idea, I couldn't see anything wrong with the system that existed before two thousand, and as the saying goes, if it's not broken, don't fix it. I'm not exactly sure what was broken or needed mending by the two thousand legislation. But my main reason for supporting the motion is my experience from the summer of two thousand and twelve through to January two thousand and thirteen with regards to the decision that this council took on managing radioactive waste and about geological disposal. I was one of the few councillors who was, I don't know whether I was brave enough or stupid enough, to stick my head above the parapet and engage with the public on it, but I met a wall of incredulity amongst the electorate within the borough who could not understand how on such an important issue forty-nine elected councillors were excluded from the decision-making process. More recently, in the Times and Star with regards to processes within the development panel, there was an editorial a few weeks ago praising public engagement in this council and its outward facing relationships with the public, and I completely agree with that. I think the problem we've got is on our internal faith-facing relationships, they are exclusive rather than inclusive, I think to strengthen democracy, we need to make them as inclusive as possible, I think a return to the committee system would help that, and therefore happy to second the motion.
Thank you, okay. We're now over with the debates, councillor Lawson, sir.
Thank you, Mr Mayor.
You've got five minutes.
Thank you. Personally, I don't believe the current executive system has not made local governments, global governments, less democratic. The system has worked well since the year two thousand. On the current customer satisfaction survey, seventy-eight percent of Aladale residents are happy with the services they provide. There's been no appetite to change the governance of council in the past fifteen years, including the four years when you, councillor Wilson, and your colleagues on the alliance operated the executive system without a murmur about operating any other way. If that was undemocratic, then it was undemocratic then, as it is now. I believe the only people who think it isn't undemocratic are opposition councillors who feel left out. Sorry about that, but the electorate decides and dictates who wants to represent them. That is the way the UKIP, the United Kingdom governance operates to a parliament, and I see no reason why it should get any different. It's interesting to hear that councillor Wilson has now revised his motion and actually now performed something. As a motion previously stood, passing a motion in favour of a committee system does not itself make it happen. This can only be implemented following an AGM, and the decision must be taken by five or four councillors at a council meeting. But before councillors take that decision, there will need to be a full report considering all options and taking into consideration all relevant considerations, including legal and financial implications, which must be properly published. I have to say that I don't understand where the motive is coming from regarding the executive not being open and transparent with a few councillors involved. All proposed decisions are listed in the forward plan. Any councillor can ask for any details or ask scrutiny, any scrutiny committee to look at the proposed decision. All executive papers are published or even advanced, just need to read the paperwork. All executive meetings are held in public, except for part two items, but they will be closed business under the system too. By far, the vast majority of decisions are not taken by the executive, very few decisions are made that way. A full list of executive decisions are in calendar, in your calendars in two thousand and fourteen. In February, the establishment of the AIP, this was called in and endorsed by the scrutiny committee, pushing forward for cumbria patients forum. In July, investment of thirty thousand pounds in HTM. September, a choice of contractor to do a heating and resiliency study, fully extended, which to much point out is fully externally funded. Choice of contractor for management of markets. In October, support for high-speed broadband provision. In November, award to build contract for the new leisure centre, acceptance of a Sport England grant. Choice of a contractor for green waste disposal, investment of up to fifty thousand pounds in a community centre, this was called in and also endorsed by the scrutiny committee. That's it. Unless decisions are taken in council, then a committee, for example, the Policies and Resources Committee of seven members, will still need to consider those decisions. It seems hardly worthwhile setting up a new system to set up committees for such a small volume of business. What's all the fuss about? I've also looked at times from the LGA and their document called Pre-Thinking Governance. It's a very good document, and perhaps the author of this motion should have a look at this publication. It suggests that you shouldn't just jump into a solution mode without having worked out what the problem is you need to fix.
You have one minute left, I guess, mate.
You could be out of the fire, kind of the fire. The old system wasn't necessarily any more open and suspend than the current system. Most stuff was done by committee chairs outside the meetings. It suggests you take time to work out and what needs to be improved, and the best way to go about it. It suggests that incorporating working groups or advisory committees or area committees into the executive system can solve a lot of problems about members feeling out of the loop. If that is really the problem, it's always to be the first solution that comes into your head, it may make things worse. And I must admit that we have got extra committees in this council, we have the constitution working group, and we also have the budget review group, which is open to any councillor who wants to come along. Those are open above the twitches we have with chairs and committees.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Thank you. Councillor Hanson? Five minutes. Alan, switch your mic off.
Very good, comrade. Can you hear me? Thank you, Mr Mayor. None of us are naive enough not to recognise the timing of this motion, with just three months to go before the election, but I'll give it the benefit of the doubt, and I welcome this discussion because I welcome political debate. Debate in council is healthy, it allows more than one point of view, it allows everyone to have their say, and it's the best way of discussing policies, practices, and procedures, certainly better than through social media which can mislead and polarise views on various issues. That's why I also welcome the video cameras at our meetings, so people can see what we have to say and make up their own minds whether they agree or not, rather than having our words diluted, our reasons reinvented, and our views restructured through the filters of social media. What I have to say may not hold as much weight in the opinions as the opinions belonging to those of you who have experienced both the executive model and the committee model. I hold my hands up and admit that I can't compare fully through experience, I can only make my judgement of whether the committee model was better or worse than the executive model by two methods. One, gauging opinion of those who have experienced both methods of governance, and two, assessing the costings, workflow processes, and timely outcomes for our electorate. With regard to the former, I have spoken to colleagues who have told me that the committee model was cumbersome, expensive, and bureaucratic. I have spoken to staff who have informed me that it was rudderless and ineffective. As an MBA graduate, I can't believe the committee model could be in any way more effective or productive, cheaper or more representative. Of course, you might expect me to say this, because I'm a member of the committee, but I haven't been for long. I chose to start on the scrutiny committee because I wanted to see how the council works as a whole unit, rather than just concentrating on a specific part. I wanted to scrutinise the work of the executive, and I wanted to be in a role where I could contribute to policy. Being a member of scrutiny allows you to do that, but it's not just the scrutiny committee who can scrutinise, anyone can. Anyone can come forward with any idea that will take the council forward, it doesn't matter what colour you nail to your political mast, it matters what you do. I volunteered, before I was on the executive, to help staff on projects because I felt I had a skill set and ideas to do something beneficial. Why don't we all take more ownership by volunteering to contribute in areas we have an interest in rather than merely wait for perhaps the next agenda to turn up? We have cross-party working groups, which are fantastic, such as the budget review working group and the member development working group. Joining these groups, making yourself indispensable, coming up with ideas to take this council forward, that's how we have ownership, that's how we become good councillors, and most importantly, that's how we represent the people out there who put their faith in us, and the executive model enables this to happen. If I'm lucky enough to be re-elected in May, I'll still have this attitude whether I'm an executive member or an opposition backbencher. It's your ownership and the representative role that makes us succeed, and our own drive and positive determination that dictates how successful this council as a whole will be.
Councillor.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Can I say that first of all, I've served under both systems, both as a committee chairman and a committee member, as an executive member, although we called it the cabinet, and as an opposition. The cabinet system is divisive, it sets half a dozen people or eight people, and they do everything, and they're not open, they're not transparent, they are a cabal, and they all work together. This is nothing like the cabinet that we had, it was open to the public, I've never heard of any public coming to any cabinet meetings, members have to go through a system, where I was, the members of the cabinet were open to everybody, in fact, even at cabinet meetings, they would allow the public to speak if they wished, not certainly because they don't get a vote, but it's much, much too encosed. Cabinet system, there are forty or more members here who have very little say, some of them don't want to say, they're quite happy just to come along and put their hand up when they're told to at the full council, but there are a lot of people who can't do anything because they're not of the right party. I'm afraid this is run by Workington, for Workington, not from Aladale.
Thank you, councillor Solia, so, please.
Thank you, Mr Chairman, I feel a bit left out, everyone's got fancy speeches, I've got the back of an envelope. I started on this council in the committee system, and I was one of the young people, and because I was a young person and worked, I couldn't take part in the committee system because I only had a limited number of days off work, and that precluded me from being a member of the committee system fully. It was several retired elderly gentlemen in those days, and a couple of women, who were on all the committees, and they were less open than this system is now. Over the four years I've been on this council this time, I've stood up here as my predecessor councillor Fee has before me, and reminded members of this council that the scrutiny committee is their way of making sure decisions, policies, and other processes are open and available to members of this council and the public. The public can refer to scrutiny. So far in these four years, no one from the member, no member of the public has referred anything to scrutiny. All scrutiny members are open to members of the public, and we've had a massive attendance, so great in fact that I can name them, Marion and Mr Marion, Hillary, Jean McLeod and her friend who I can't remember. That is the public attendance at scrutiny in the last four years. The number of work items that have been put forward by members of this council could probably put on one hand, we have circulated members of this council to say, come along and take part on scrutiny issues that you are interested on, take part in working parties that you're interested in, we have to ring round and cajole people to take part, members of this council have never volunteered. I cannot see how returning to the committee system would open this council or any other council up to members of the public, they had so much freedom to attend and take part at the moment that they do not use.
Thank you. Councillor Frye?
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor, I'm just thinking about Tony, not some of the stuff there, there's some editing he taught me about public speaking at executive committee meetings, apart from the last sort of three sentences which is, you know, just isn't right. And that's why we ended up trying to sort out planning and the representation of planning and the whole structure around the planning. But for nearly four years now, I've sort of sat and listened, and it's been almost silence from you, in truth, that isn't personally happening, but the sort of bottom end, sort of mob down the bottom end, I suppose. Nothing until this guy turns up with a camera, and then you're suddenly full of beans and big air. You're on set out for a hundred and a half years, and now this fellow comes, you're here, you're parading in front of the cameras, and that's all it is, to parade in front of the cameras. In all that time, I don't think any of yous have pitched in for anything of any significance within your community at all. Not one thing. I'm trying to think, think on my feet, but I just can't see. And yet you blame it all on the system. It's not the system, it's a lack of ambition. That's what the problem is. You've been nothing, you've done nothing until Alfred Hitchcock turned up here. Because in reality, it's a horror story, that's the reality of it. And I would say to you, you've been bump along doing absolutely nothing for the last three and a half years, and griping about everybody else, griping about everybody else getting on and driving the place on as much as it can. In reality, that's sure been on your foot, because you believe the committee system is the future, and it's the past. The absurdity is, you think the past is the future. But you had your chance, because you've served under, when you've been in power, and you squandered that chance. When we came in, the first thing we had to do was look at the books, and instead of changing the system and having a go at changing the system and changing the structure of the local authority, you squandered it on much the same, because it was comfortable for you. And it was comfortable for you because it was nice, because you didn't have to make decisions, because you spent the money instead. And that's the reality of the system that we're talking about now. The analogy is you almost changed the world, but what did you do? I don't really know what you done, I don't know if you put a park bench on each of your wards, I don't know. But take a look at what power, leadership, and decisions, no matter how tough they are, can do for you, but only if you've got that ambition. And the system that allows you to have that ambition is the current system we're operating. I introduced the leadership leader and cabinet system in here, as the leader of the council, sat down as a young man and watched the old committee system work, and how smooth it was, and how comfortable it was for some people, how comfortable it was for people turning up and just opening the agendas, and reading the agendas and being led by the nose by officers, which doesn't happen now. Well, you might think so, maybe you should come and sit and come to an executive meeting and maybe see, because you're entitled to come, but many of yous have turned up half the time. The structure's a crutch for you, the old system, it's a safety road for a lack of ambition. Because we served up all our park benches, and we delivered all sale chains in the last three and a half years. We've done it previously, from a demolition of some standard housing across the borough, delivering new housing estates, a new shopping centre, and now a new sports centre, and take note, they were done under different systems.
You have one minute, councillor Frye.
So don't underestimate the current structure, it's not about the structure, it's about drive, it's about ambition, it's about passion, it's not about park benches, and it's not about the past, because we've waited for four years for this, and this is the best that you can do. This is the first challenge that you've given us in four years, you haven't challenged a budget, you haven't challenged us in full council in any way, shape, or form, and if I were you, I'll go back to your communities and apologise for the last four years of what you've done, genuinely you should, because you're not fighting for them, you're not fighting for a system that you feel comfortable in. That's what you're fighting for, because the past, you're looking for the past, in doing so, you're letting the future down.
Thank you. Councillor, anyone else?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, what I, if I may, I just want to give a, what we've got now, because I don't know whether councillors know what we've got now, and I know some of yous do, because I do see one or two at most of the meetings. We have development panel, it's a twelve-member member committee, mixed, it isn't one party, it's mixed, all partners are qualified. We have the licensing panels, five members again, mixed, so, you know, I don't think they're going to change it, you've got at the moment the scrutiny subcommittee, footwear lighting, again, nine members, mixed. What I mean by mixed is it's made up of different parties, it isn't the one party, because they've got the community, community over there and scrutiny committee, twelve members, mixed again. So you've got all your committee, seven members, mixed again. Hang on, I've got fourteen pages. So I've got five minutes. Licensing committee, fifteen members, mixed again. Executive, oh, I'm sorry to say, seven members later, sorry, I've made a mistake. Council, fifty-six members, because council does make some decisions, fifty-six members, mixed. Harriet Dallow and John Board, four members, mixed. Comfort overview and scrutiny committee, twelve members, mixed. Okay, I'm still going. Standards committee, seven members, mixed. I can't be boring you that good when you're yawning that much, you've got another five minutes, sorry, four minutes. Personal tribunal, five members, mixed. Discretionary housing payments, three members, mixed. Hang on, I'm still going. Chief officers employment panel, five members, mixed. Information district format, unfortunately, we have to take county council colleagues on board with that, but it is mixed. Members development working group, eight members, mixed. Now, one of the few committees which I chair, the public have great interest, we have had more than once had to move the venues from this room to other areas to accommodate the number of public that come to, come to want to see what we're doing, and what we, and give the opportunity to speak as well, but what I'm saying to you is, I can't see what the difference will be between this what we've got now, and this what we've got now, except, and I was a member of both committees, Except, and I was a member of both committees, you'll slow decisions so far down. That by the time you decide what you're going to do, it'll have gone past you. Thank you very much, chairman. Uh, Mr Mayor, do apologize.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I was hoping I wasn't going to have to follow Peter and I don't think I can put that gravitas into it. Um, I was quite interested in this notice of motion. Um, we haven't had very many notices of motion in the last three and a half years. And I, I, I think I did say last, at the last meeting, that one of my favourite councillors is actually Bill Fingley. Because if anyone is going to challenge us, it's usually Bill. And I, I've said that to you, you know, so it's rather unusual that this isn't your notice of motion. But there you go, you win the long term blues on. I remind the council though, I, I have served on a lot of uh councils, the town council, the county council. And this council, and I've had, uh, served in both the old system before, before two thousand and this system. I've served as a member of a cabinet, I've served as a member of this executive, I've been chairs of scrutiny committees. I've been chairs of all sorts of other committees. And I know, I can tell you this, those of you who don't know, the committee system of the past was very cumbersome. It was very cumbersome and decisions took a long time to make. And I think sometimes we, we, we live in the past and we think that it was better. But I'll remind the council of its own obligations to the public. Because this is the penultimate body of this council, it's not the executive, it's this body. This body, by law, legislation has to approve its council plan and the budget. And the executive has to operate within the confines of the council plan and its budget. Those are the decisions we make based on what you people in this room have agreed. Now, I have to say, every year I get up to pass, to present the budget and I don't get much from anybody. It's almost like, oh, here we go again. But our council bales has thought eloquently to me, pointed out the number of committees that actually do exist in this council. To which, when I became the deputy leader, I added two more. The budget review working group and the some, I've got some absolute stalwarts who have been with it from the day it started. Rarely miss a meeting and who scrutinise the budget of this council on behalf of this council and its communities. And there is the constitution working group, which actually looks at the constitution. And the mover of this motion has recently done that. Uh, the planning matter that Bill referred to, the MRW estimate, I have to agree with you. I have a very heavy heart about that because I have spent twenty years avoiding sitting on any kind of planning committee. But that was about legislation and we had no choice in that. I don't think a full council would have been able to make any further decisions. But I do know one thing about that debate. In the previous administration, it was the previous administration that had made the decision to enter that debate in the first place. Not us, and we had to live with it. So we do that. And the public do attend executive meetings, they can at any point in time. When members ask permission to come so that they can look at a particular item, I could change that in the constitution. The last administration, by the way, was a rainbow administration, every colour except red. But I remember one thing about that and I just want to tell you it down there, it'll smile. Because this side here had, did have more ambition than you did. Because we challenged every single thing you decided upon. Far more than you people in opposition do. Ever, I think, was not, I called just about everything in and if I didn't, he did. If, and our, our scrutiny committees went on forever and I think we scrutinised car parking to death, didn't we, Sam? So I, I, I don't think that what you're saying is right. I think it is opportunist in, in everything. But I will finally end with one thing. The last administration were very seriously challenged by us when you people decided to remove the minutes from all of our committees. From this agenda. And we discussed that with you and we debated it and we complained about it and we never changed it. So that's, that went out of the public arena. And very finally, public confidence in this borough is one of the highest in the UK. That does not suggest to me that this is an untransparent uh council.
I'd like to inform the council and the leader councillor Smith. That I have researched the local government association, the government scrutiny and the independent group at the local government association. And since the implementation of the Local Government Act in two thousand and eleven. Twelve councils have returned to the committee system. The biggest one, the first one was Nottingham County Council. And this year, there's three others applying for to return the committee system. And I would just like to quote what the leader of the Nottingham County Council said. I am looking forward to returning to the committee system as it's the most open and democratic way of making decisions at a local level. The committee system allows all sixty-seven councillors elected by the public to play their part in the decision-making of the council. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, councillor Wilson has requested a recorded vote. Now, this must be agreed by one quarter of the members present, which is twelve. So all those in favour of recorded votes, please show. Okay, thank you. Right. The, a recorded vote will be taken by the monitoring officer. So can you please take a vote?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'll call out each councillor's name and can you please tell me whether you're for or against, like, is any abstentions? Councillor Armstrong. Sorry, councillor Carol Armstrong. Councillor Pinky Armstrong. Councillor Bacon. Councillor Fenbridge. Councillor Bales. Councillor Cunnon. Councillor Combeum. Councillor Cowell. Councillor Couch. Councillor Davies. Councillor Fingley. Councillor Fitzgerald. Councillor Fryer. Councillor Gainford. Councillor Garnard. Councillor Hanson. Councillor Harrington. Councillor Heaslip. Councillor Hodgson. Councillor Holden. Councillor Holliday. Councillor Jackson. Councillor George Kemp. Councillor Dunston Kemp. Councillor Peter Kendall. Councillor Angela Kendall. Councillor Lister. Councillor McDonald. Councillor Maguire. Councillor McCullen Holmes. Councillor Muskelley. Councillor Mewa. Councillor Mansay. Councillor Mumbey. Can you repeat that? Thank you. Councillor Nicholson. Councillor North. Councillor Pugmeyer. Councillor Ray. Councillor Scott. Councillor Alan Smith. Councillor Christine Smith. Councillor Standage. Councillor Celia Tibble. Councillor Philip Tibble. Councillor Wilson. Councillor Martin Ward. Councillor Joyce Ward. And councillor John Wright. Thank you.
Thank you, members. The result of the vote, twelve for, twenty-seven against. And nine abstentions, most of the votes. Thank you. Okay, item number seven, nurse announcements, these are on pages five to eight. Nurses consider the measures against the nurse against the last meeting. Uh, just wanted to say one thing, uh, thanks to Bill, he came sat next to me. He organised a, uh, a Christmas concert at Carnegie, uh, which was run by, um, the Countess Bill Gates from Wiltshire. Fantastic, uh, Sunday afternoon. I raised a sum of two thousand pounds, I shall speak. So, thank you, Bill. Okay, item eight, poll your holders' reports, these are on pages nine to sixteen of the agenda. Again, there's a maximum of thirty minutes for this item on the rule four nine nine. Nurses consider reports from members of the executive. Councillor Anderson Smith.
Okay, Mr Mayor, I rise to move agenda item eight for poll your reports. My report's on page ten. I'll take any questions from the councillors. Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you. Councillor Cannon.
Uh, thank you, um, Mr Mayor, I move my report, which is laid out and presented. Um, I don't think I've got anything to add to it, if you can, you're not undoubtedly asked questions.
Yeah, thanks, sir. Thanks, Mr Mayor, yeah. Um, at the bottom of page eleven on reducing poverty, uh, the very last sentence running over the page. Um, about working partnership with go at the Solway to engage local residents. That suggests to me that there's a presumption behind it, that poverty is an issue that's sort of related to social housing tenancy. Have you actually investigated the incidence of poverty, um, in Workington, uh, and merit what you come to that conclusion?
Um, Bill, I, I don't know where you've been the last four years, we have debated this at Nottingham. And before this administration, it was debated from, from NHS publishing its own data about poverty. To, to this council looking at housing and other issues. There is, there is some significant data that was published by the county council, which was the first, um, local authority to. To actually publish an anti-poverty strategy for the county. And it identified some significant poverty in Allardale and in two areas in particular. The, the data continues to exist, it hasn't diminished. In fact, I would go as far as to say in some places it's getting worse because of economic conditions. Um, so there are a number of strands that we have published with our, um, reducing poverty strategy, which has been shared by this council. And if you haven't seen it, I'd be very happy to give it to you. But I, I have to say, it's not a badge of honour, but the places we've identified do have some significant debt protection.
Well, page eleven, Barbara, Workington Hall. The question comes through Susan Curran after it, uh, Robbie brings his phone home and all this. And it's partly the bottom line, um, subject to budget approval prepare which, do we have any idea of the estimated costs? That will be needed for that phase.
Yes, and I have reported it in the past, and can just recall that figure time. Um, it is about subject to budget approval and it is unfortunately a significant amount of money and we've done what we can. We did try, um, to see if we could get some grant aid from, um, English, English heritage. And it weren't terribly helpful, I'm afraid. So it will fall to this council, um, to do something again. If you want an exact figure, I will ask an officer to provide it, but it will be an estimate. Because I tend to find that whenever you start looking at these, it's like a piece of string, it gets bigger.
Yeah, thanks, Mr Mayor. Um, it's, it's not to do with anything in the report, Mark, but it's to do with something that's cropped up recently. And that's to do with the reported in national and local press about collapsing milk prices. Um, has the council either been approached by first creamery at Bathia to see if there's any support we can give? Or alternatively, have officers approached first creamery to see if there's any support that you could offer?
No, Bill, that's the, the answer, but there's not, if, if you want to facilitate that, absolutely. Maybe declare the initiative somewhere else there, it's more than that. So I do know of a sort of information about the, the operation there. But any local company like that, we've talked to pretty far recently about the position that they're in because of, uh, external forces. Whether the governance is abhorred or outside of the county, which puts them under particular pressure. And certainly, um, we have talked, uh, it's certainly in political forum about the way that the milk prices are currently collapsing all around them. And, and the positions that many dairy farms and the smaller dairy farms are in across the county. So, um, you know, look, uh, set me up and, and see what we can do. Because, you know, it's all about maintaining the jobs that we are, that's our first priority. Secondly, is bringing the meat. And thirdly, the, the companies that are there are looking to grow and how to facilitate back to work, so we appreciate it.
Councillor Wilson.
Yes, Mark, I, I don't know if it's you I should be asking, but you mentioned Carlisle Leisure in your economic report for your councillor seat. There's all the rumours going around Carlisle and the North of Allardale that Carlisle Leisure has been taken over by a London firm. I'll tell you, I'll tell you what they, if I come to report here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, I rise to, uh, move my, uh, report on page twelve. Uh, in doing so, I'd just like to, uh, comment as well about, um. Our corporate health and safety adviser, who gets a mention again in this, uh, in this report. I think it's his second mention in as many meetings. Uh, he's produced an article in an international magazine, which is absolutely fantastic. Gives some really good exposure to the work that we've done here. Uh, and if anybody wants to see the magazine, uh, just give Barry Chambers a bell and I'm sure he'll be more than delighted to show you the articles.
Councillor Heaslip.
Uh, Mr Mayor, one of the, uh, one of the, uh, lists of, uh, one of the list of committees that Peter Bills mentioned. He did mention the early working group meetings, which have been taking place, which is not particularly there. Every single councillor of all parties, every part, every, every part of, uh, I would take part. And I trust those members who bothered to take part in that process, or were able to, I shouldn't say one, were able to, people who were the committees. Uh, found them useful, but we've been talking about a wide range of issues, uh, to do with almost everything this, uh, this, this council's involved in. Um, on, uh, over the page where I mentioned, I'll pick up on councillor Wilson's point. Uh, I have to say, CLL is not part of the council. This, it's an outside body which we are not, uh, we are not members of. But I can confirm, it's not a rumour, CLL, which is a, in effect, uh. An employee owned charitable company, a social enterprise, have merged with another, not been taken over by. Have merged with another, uh, employee owned charitable enterprise, uh, which has got a, 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 a national reputation. uh, which has got, uh, a, a, a national reputation, uh, and, and operates all over the country, and the CLL bit, I understand, will be the nodding of an operation which enables them to access things like procurement at a much, uh, at a much better, uh, procure things at, at a much better price, gives them a much more sound financial basis, because previously they were dependent on a contract with Allardale Borough Council, a contract with Carlisle City Council, either which could have, uh, could have been terminated, put out of business, so now in a much more, uh, secure financial situation, but any other questions beyond that, I'm afraid you'll have to direct, I'd like to, CLL, because I'm, 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 I'm not in a position to answer on, on their behalf. I can say that it will not affect, uh, the detail of our upgraded contact with them, which is the base to the new organisation, um, at the end of, uh, at the, at the end of February. Um, the only other thing I wanted to mention, while I'm referring you to the language, Mr Mayor, is the, uh, Solway Cores, the O N B, on your report, which is, uh, on your desk, uh, excellent job done by the, by our partners and the, uh, staff unit that we host for the O N B, thank you very much.
Councillor Pinky, answer on.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, um, I was wondering if, uh, the Workton Pool had, uh, gotten results from the executive at the last meeting, if you, whatever, ever helped with funding wise.
Mr Mayor, I'm sorry, I don't understand the question, what are you driving at?
Uh, 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 we have helped, uh, the Workton Pool then towards, with funding, uh, I, I think it was on discussion, was it, at the last, uh, executive meeting?
Can you sit up, is Michael?
Yeah, Mr Mayor, we've already, uh, we made, uh, some funding available to the, uh, the group that were engaged, uh, the trust that were engaged in, uh, taking over the, uh, Workton Pool from the county council, uh, put some, I can't remember off the top of my head, a few thousand, but by default, might be five thousand, to support them in the feasibility study, the next step in the process, I, as I understand it, is that the, uh, county council will then be involved in a chemical asset transfer to that group, we will be helping that group to develop a, a business plan and a forward plan, there is some funding available in the, uh, in, in the budget, uh, for, uh, uh, for the, uh, for the Workton Pool, uh, but until we've got the feasibility study and the business plan from the pool trustees, uh, it would be wrong to make a comment any further on that, but there is funding available to support Workton Pool.
Councillor George, can?
Thanks, Mr Mayor, uh, I would just like to ask councillor Heslop, uh, with regard to the wave centre in Maryport, uh, which my front row actually looks over, when are we gonna switch the wind turbine on that's been, uh, off for three and a half years, it hasn't done one revolution in three and a half years, I just wonder why?
Free them tonight, there, the cameras must be here. I can't answer that question, because that's an operational matter for CLL who, uh, cooperate, uh, who operate the wave centre, it's we don't operate the wave centre, we don't operate the wind turbine, they do that, I'm afraid you'll have, you'll have to direct your question to them, but seeing as the question you've asked interests me, I will ask them and pass the answer on.
Councillor Finley.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor, um, on page fourteen, uh, my Sport and Recreation, you'll remember the meeting we co-chaired on Thursday, it's, uh, Fletcher Town, where it became apparent that the, um, that Allardale Council was under the impression that the consultants who'd been employed by Sport England, um, had given the impression to the council that all the parish and town councils had already been consulted, and that's not the case. Uh, I believe an email went out from the council on Monday to Parish and Town Council clerks to that effect, um, so, two, two points, first of all, has there been a failure in process with the consultant, um, in not consulting, the other issue, of course, is that some parishes meet only once every two months or so, uh, the closing date for the formal consultation is the middle of February, so can we have your assurance that the consultation period will be extended for those parishes which won't meet before the fifteenth of February, thanks.
Mr Mayor, the formal closing date, what closing, closing date for consultation is the third day of February, which is not a drop date, is it? Uh, we're quite prepared to, uh, take responses beyond that, uh, in respect of those parish and town councils who thought they hadn't responded, uh, there were some that had thought they hadn't responded, but when we actually go back here and checked, uh, not only had they had an invitation, they had in fact responded, some of them, we've got, I've got the full list with me, we've got the full list of everybody who had responded, including those who've forgotten they had responded, I'm quite happy to send it on to you.
Councillor McCannan Holmes, please.
Thank you, Mr Chairman, I rise to move the housing and health portfolio.
Any questions for councillor McCannan Holmes, please? Thank you, councillor Soles Tibble, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, uh, before we move, uh, item two point seven, my portfolio report, I would particularly ask councillors to note, um, the comments on Trace Nicholson from IT who recently retired, uh, I'm sure councillors that have been on the council, whether it's been a, a long period of time or short, um, will, will know that Trace's contribution to this council has been, uh, very, very big, um, and, and she's always been special and friendly in the way she dealt with officers and, and members, so I'd like the council to form a review, uh, our thanks and wish you well for the future. Uh, in terms of the survey that's been mentioned a couple of times tonight, we're hoping to, it's not in the report, but we're hoping to organise a presentation in some stages, which we'll be hoping to all councillors, um, there's a lot of detail we need, uh, and it is broken down around towns in Allardale, the area we're in, and it will be of use, I think, to, to individual members to, to come to that, that we will circulate again for that, thank you.
Any questions for councillor Tibble? Thank you, okay, item nine, the executive minutes, these are on pages seventeen thirty-two, maximum fifteen minutes for this item, rule four nine ten, and to note the components of the minutes of the meeting of the executive, held in McSense of September sixteenth of October and the twelfth of November two thousand and fourteen, councillor Anderson, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, I rise to move agenda item nine, which you have so eloquently put out the dates of for me, um, moving.
Are those noted? Item ten, calculation of council tax base for two thousand and fifteen sixteen, these are on pages thirty-three to one oh two, again there, councillor McCannan.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, I'm, uh, rising to what before the council, the calculation of the council tax base for two thousand and fifteen sixteen, um, I, I say this every time I do this, that this is a technical report where we, as a council, calculate what the tax base is for the district, and which the council must approve by the end of this month. Uh, section two explains how the calculation is made, um, this is a statutory requirement to set the council tax base, and to notify the pre-setting authorities, that is the Cumbria County Council and the Cumbria Police and Prime Commissioner. The council tax base is effectively an estimate of the number of council tax properties in the billing authorities' area, each property has been allocated based on the value and the amount of council tax you pay depends on the band of the property, there are eight council tax bands running from A to H, with the council tax base expressed through the average band D equivalent, band D is calculated by adding together all the properties and multiplying by the, the band ratio, the council must estimate its collection rate for the year, and it is proposed that we maintain this at ninety-seven point five percent. The council tax base is multiplied by this percentage to arrive at the final council tax base, the tax base is set at an individual parish level in order that each parish pre-set may be charged a tax base for that parish, and in fact, you would notice that a lot of your appendices fall through that, would you? The recommended tax base for tax setting purposes for two thousand and fifteen sixteen, estimated on the band D properties, is twenty-eight thousand nine hundred and five point two nine. Once the council has identified its budget, budget requirement for the year, which we will do next month, this will be divided by the tax base for tax setting purposes, to give the amount of council tax which a, a band D property will incur during the year, um, and that, that's all I have to say about this, as I said, it is a technical report, but it's one we must do, and I ask the council to approve it.
Do we have that seconded, please? Okay, can we please take a vote, all in favour, can you please show, keep your hands raised until after the moment, please? That's unanimous, thank you. Okay, item eleven, councillors allowances, these are on pages one oh three to one two four, councillor Cannon.
Uh, thank you, Mr Mayor, um, this is another annual report that comes before council at the same time every year, uh, will remind council that we have an independent remuneration committee that meets once a year to look at the members allowances scheme for the council, they make the, um, recommendations that are in front of you, which is for us to debate and agree or not, um, I, I would move that we note this report, but I will also say that as the Labour Group does not agree to take an increase in allowances this year, it is my recommendation to the council that no increases are approved, however, I would, we should agree with the independent panel that if it wishes to look at reviewing, um, allowances for next year, and it has pointed out that there are some issues that are concerned with, then it is in fact for that committee to do that, that's why we appoint them, that's why they're independent, and I, I think they should do that, and with that, with that, um, revise or move?
Do you have a second, Mr Mayor? Ah, thank you, okay, uh, can we please take a vote, sorry, councillor Dale.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, um, I'm just gonna go over some notes I wrote last year about this, and it's exactly the same, the last time the basic allowance went up, uh, which is two thousand nine hundred and sixty-six pounds and sixty-five pence, just for the press, was the first of the fourth, two thousand and eight, uh, and this was moved by the, Joe Milban, who was leader of the council, and the leader of the council would be paid, now listen, thirty thousand five hundred and ninety-eight pound and one penny, that was moved at the council meeting on the fifth of March two thousand and eight. It's in the green books if you go upstairs, if you're bothered, um, what it works out to, it's a rise, again, because it's exactly the same as last year, it's a rise of thirty pound and thirty-three pence per year, fifty-eight pence a week, point oh eight three nine oh nine pence per day, and don't forget, we haven't had anything for now, seven years, so it even goes, there's not that many notes, I'm not gonna go into it, because it's nearly like, you know, what's pie, it's that bad, but what I'm trying to say to you is, I, I agree with the proposal in secondary, that we do not take this rise, thank you. Oh, I, I do apologise.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, uh, regarding the councillors allowances for this year, as Peter pointed out, for seven years, the council's basic allowance hasn't risen, um, we're now in a position where it's, it's something like along the, the, the same lines as the, as the increase in council tax, some councils haven't taken that, haven't taken that, that, that decision, and now they're lagging behind on their base budget, it's the same as councillors allowances, one percent over seven year would be about hundred fifty quid, right, for a seven year.
Correct, maybe a penny.
Maybe a penny, what I've done is that I think that now, that, that the increase of, of, of workloads on, on certain chairs, on certain committees, it needs to be looked at, and what I, and what I will ask the chief executive to do is to look at a complete overhaul of, of allowances and expenses for the next council, I think it's only way forward, if we wanna get young people into this council, two thousand nine hundred and forty-nine pounds, which is then income tax and national insurance, is not gonna drive young people through those doors, and same as a chairman as well, if we want young people in this, in this, in this, in this council chamber, you've got to pay the growing rate, but the councils right through the, 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 the country are paying far excess of what Allardale Borough Council pays, I think on, on, on the league of allowances and, uh, expenses, we are sixth off the bottom, sixth off the bottom, we need, if we are gonna be a professional, a professional outfit here, we need to get young people in, they're the future, we aren't, and the only way we're gonna get them in is to entice them through decent allowances and expenses, thank you, Mr Mayor.
Okay, for the policy, the motion is to accept recommendations on page one oh three of the council agenda, except for the one percent increase to all members allowances, including the mayor and deputy mayor, can we please take a vote? Sorry, on a basis, yeah, so, please give your hands raised, all those in favour? Except for the review, except the one percent rise, is it clear? All those gazed? Do you want the voting?
Yep.
Abstentions? Thank you, the motion is carried, item twelve, rough runs on planning policy working group, something for the twelfth, two thousand and fourteen, wind turbines, minimum distance from residential premises still, pages one two five to one two eight, councillor Frye.
Yeah, thanks, Mr Mayor, uh, this is pretty solid, it's probably on the usual chart, um, we do go back to the, uh, the policy planning policy working group, come back to it, we said that it was a full council, there were no issues around, in my view, um, Rory, uh, getting something down there in London and trying to resurrect the deal, uh, it goes through, if you look at the distances, and there's a, a conclusion at the back, and given the need to comply with the national policy and what we have done locally, and getting that through at a local level, then it gives us another, uh, argument position in Parliament, so, just got the full council to, to see whether it's manageable to do, to let it make a decision, that's not going to be a big issue.
Okay, councillor Fitzgerald, please.
I'd just like to, I am a member of the planning policy review group, and I'd just like to take this opportunity to ask the council to support Rory Stewart's bill, I'm asking this in light of the fact that the area covered by this planning authority already hosts more than sixty-two percent of the county's fleet of wind turbines, many residents are affected by noise and shadow flicker, and I'm aware of many complaints from people living in various parts of the borough, residents in rural parts of Allardale and also in the area around Workington have already made a hugely significant contribution to wind energy, much more than in other parts of the UK. Councillors will note that the bill would not be a blanket ban, it would not apply to wind turbines below fifteen metres in height, to supply electricity to a far more premises, a wind turbine really does not have to be any bigger than fifteen metres, and its impact on residential amenity of neighbours would be limited, larger turbines, I'm afraid, often do represent a commercial bid for government subsidies, rather than a genuine desire to contribute to green energy, so, in acknowledgement of the fact that many of our residents So in acknowledgement of the fact that many of our residents are suffering the effects of inappropriate wind energy development, I propose Alladale Borough Council support Rory Stewart's bill. Thank you very much, Mr Mayor.
Is that seconded? Okay, councillor Finlay. Oh, sorry, councillor Beales.
The problem I've got with this is we have just spent four years of the last administration and three and a half years of this administration, gone to huge expense for public consultation to get our local plan part one through. We've spent nearly seven and a half years on and off getting that local plan. We, and please correct me if I'm wrong, we are the only council with a setback distance in the whole of the country, which can be breached if it meets certain conditions, which is small turbines, if the local population agrees with them, or if the topography, you know, if there's a hill in the way, which we had recently and one thing and another. So the problem I've got is, are we going to ignore all this money we've spent, time we've spent getting our local plan part one in place by doing this, which, yeah, it's a good idea and I have no idea. But realistically, and also the inspector looked at this as well, Triggy, and she said realistically, it's not feasible. Because, to be honest with you, if you went down this road and it was put into parliament, which they can do, there wouldn't be a turbine in Britain. All right then, I'll give, I'll give you, there'll be one or two, but there wouldn't be many. Well, there would, because they're all here in Alladale. But what I'm saying to you is, that is the only doubt I've got. After spending all this time, money and energy getting our local plan through, why are we going to, why are we going to throw it on the hedge? Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Mr Mayor. Just to respond to Peter's concerns, some of us actually sat in on the, the entire process of the public examination of the local plan. The inspector, Susan Holland, was very keen that she should give us setback, but she was aware that in particular circumstances that we got, she had to avoid anything that would seem to be a blanket ban. And that's why we settled as an authority on eight hundred metres. That has no statutory underpinning at the moment. The only underpinning it has is that it is within the local plan and that is a statutory document. So on each application we receive, it's still open to challenge, it's still open to appeal. To have a statutory basis, I would consider to be a waste of money. It's unfortunate that we would have spent all that money and time on it, the legislation to take us over. But I'd much rather we were on a statutory basis where there's no ambiguity about what our position is. And if it's meant that we spent time and money, so be it. That's the way the penny drops.
councillor Farren. Yeah, just on that point, Peter, I don't think you picked, I don't think you picked the point of that, that bill making. That's what it is. But the, the, the application's gone to the inspector, it was, it was agreed with the local politicians in this particular case, which was the planning committee, the officers of the council who've got a setback distance in place. So at, at some point, there is some form of statutory decision made for a setback distance. We don't have a, we spend our money to do that, that's what we've done. We, the council, done that. And we've done it because we thought that there was good reason for it. And the planning committee have struggled over the last sort of two or three years with issues around planning and some of our changes in infrastructure and around, particularly around some wind farms and, and, and closeness to people's properties. If you look, the ones at Flinby, nobody had ever heard of Blight when it, when it first kicked off. And the sun was setting in the west. Then suddenly the ones at St. Ellen's, every time the sun's turning, every time the wind's blowing, and the sun's setting, the houses on that end are blighted by the sun. And we wouldn't have positioned them there, they wouldn't have been within that eight hundred and fifty metre distance, which is what we've got. So there's some good reason why we supported that particular position. And I think, and if we'd have moved it forward, this is just a position to say to, to the MP, the planning board, yeah, we might be supportive, we might write a letter in support. Whether we spend money, whatever we want to support, as in, yes, we support that position. Because what we've got to do is underpin, underpin the statute position that we have country got. And the only one in the country that's got that. Whether it's worth anything, this won't be time as a separate issue. But if you don't, if, if nobody makes the case, then there's absolutely no doubt that the setback position will never, ever be enforced. So it's got to be, and it's got to be, the case has got to be made. And I just think that we should support it.
Thank you. Okay, well, councillor Fitzgerald's motion which has been seconded, so can we please take a vote? All those in favour, please show. Please keep your hands raised. All those in case? Abstentions? Thank you. All those in favour? Okay, final item. Article thirteen, reference of the planning committee, twenty-fourth of July two thousand and fourteen, project management operations, year review, two thousand and fourteen fifteen. These are on pages one two nine to one five eight, in the agenda. councillor Baybridge.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, I'd like to move the report.
Is that agreed? Thank you.